I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. At this time, I would ask all persons to shut off their cellphones. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Good evening.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Here.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Here.
Mr. President.
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 Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
No.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Will everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this meeting, state fire codes say we all must be seated. So will everybody please try to find a seat? And if there are no seats in here, there are seats on the outside, just on the outside, and you can hear the conversations there also.
I have none.
Public hearings. Any member of the public would like to speak on any docketed item? Please, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and you are limited to four minutes of speaking.
Council President, Members of the Council, Allen Fund, 1581 Phoenix Avenue. With all due respect, Council President, I'd like to speak on two docketed items relating to police contract as well as the state police report, and I'd ask if, just for the courtesy, if I can go over the four minutes a little bit, if that's possible.
Most certainly, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Council President. First of all, the first issue I'd like to address is the IBPO police contract that is before you tonight. Now, I would urge that all the council members follow in the recommendation of the Council Finance Committee and approve this contract for all the hard work and men and women of our great police department. It was a byproduct of continued negotiations for months with the IBPO that also included, from the management side, Colonel Winchesters and members of my administration, and we believe that it is a fair contract, fair with respect to treating the men and women fairly, making sure that it preserves management rights for Colonel Winchesters and flexibilities for Colonel Winchesters, but also fair to the taxpayers. So I urge you to follow the unanimous decision of Finance Committee as it relates to that vote tonight. Next, I'd like to take the opportunity to address the state police report. But before I begin, I do want to take a moment to publicly acknowledge and thank Rhode Island State Police Colonel Stephen O'Donnell, Lieutenant Colonel Barry, as well as Captain Moynihan for their guidance and help during a time that our police department was in need. They worked hard on behalf of the citizens of Cranston, and I'm very appreciative of that fact, we all are, and thank them for what they've done for us. And in January of 2014, I made the decision to ask Colonel O'Donnell and the Rhode Island State Police to take control of the Cranston Police Department. In doing so, I asked the state police to not only complete the ticketing investigation that had been started by our fine internal affairs division of our Cranston Police Department, but I also asked them to provide me with an assessment of the department to help the city move forward and to conduct an impartial and thorough review. And when I called for that assessment, I was well aware, well aware of the fact that my own personal decisions, as well as decisions of others, including past and present members of my administration, past and present Cranston Police officers, as well as department leadership, would be reviewed and, yes, potentially criticized. Knowing this full well, but given the importance of this great police department, I decided to still go forward and request that assessment. Before I asked the state police for an assessment, we all know the story, there have been several situations that have been present in an department for decades. First, there was a culture of factionalism, the so-called A Team and B Team, which is nothing more than favoritism and factionalism within the police department in which either officers in Camp A or Camp B sided with one another based upon their perceived team allegiance. This had been going on for decades, and we also know that morale was low. But most importantly was the fact that there had never been a top-to-bottom assessment of our department. And the facts at that time supported an assessment, and given those facts, I don't regret, I don't regret one bit for my decision to call for that assessment to occur. You know, and we all saw that, even though, as the letter indicated that you all received from Council President Laney, that it's critical of some of my decisions, it can be hard for anyone to look in the mirror, but it's times like these that it has to be done. And on Thursday, I received word that that assessment was complete, and not wanting to wait even one more day, I drove to Sitewatt on Friday afternoon and personally met with Colonel O'Donnell, Lieutenant Colonel Barry, and Captain Moynihan. And I took the time to once again thank them for the service that they provided the residents of Cranston and was provided with the report. And since receiving it, I have read the report and continue to digest it. I've had many accomplishments, as mayor, that I've been very proud of. You all have heard of them, you know it, you're all a part of it, the balanced budgets, the job creation, the pension reform with even many of the men and women that are here tonight, raising our bond rating not once but several times. And in fact, you all know, Standard &amp; Poor's upgraded us to the highest rating we've had with them in two decades. But through this process, and not just since getting this report, I realize that my administration and I can do better, and we will do better in this area. Looking back at the events that are contained in this report, of course, there are decisions, decisions that I want to change, but needless to say, hindsight is always 20/20. But we've already taken, I've already taken substantial steps to fix this problem, many of these problems. I selected a chief, Colonel Michael Winchesters, who's sitting behind us, who's not from either team. He's the first chief from outside a department in our history, and he was the number two at the state police. And morale is coming up, and you guys were all part of that process in approving the Colonel. We've negotiated a new contract with the IBPO, which gives the chief some discretion to fix some of the inequities in assignments and duties. And our city has grown over the years, but so has the demands on public safety. And one of the things that I will consider is both the feasibility and, yes, the wisdom, as some have suggested, of whether we have to establish a cabinet-level position called the Public Safety Commissioner. The administrative structure of our city has not changed with the demands on police and fire. We have a budget currently close to $300 million. However, the model to manage it was created when everything west of Oaklawn Avenue was farmland. This position is currently in place in Providence and takes away the perception of politics for public safety. I think we should take a look at whether or not it's feasible and right for Cranston. Now, getting to the report, I know that there are some who want me to release the report right away, but the law may not permit me to do so. This report contains confidential personnel matters, and parts of the report may not be appropriate for me to release. And today, along with Solicitor, Solicitor Lawson, we delivered a request to the Office of Attorney General Kyl Martin, asking and providing him a copy of the report, asking for his guidance as to which portions of the report are public. And upon that advice, I will promptly release what I can. Ladies and gentlemen, in short, these structural problems didn't start with my administration. In fact, they are decades old. I did not create these problems, but one thing I will do, I will take ownership of fixing them, of that you and the residents of Cranston can be assured. And I want to take a moment to thank the citizens of Cranston for their continued support and trust, and also want to thank the many men and women of the police department, many of city employees that are here tonight, but particularly the police department, for all their continued hard work under the leadership, the new leadership of Colonel Winchesters. Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker will be Michael J. Sepe, Massachusetts Street.
Mr. Council President, Members of the Cranston City Council. I just knocked over everything. First of all, I came here also tonight thinking that we were going to commend the police union for their great renegotiation of their contract. As we know, 21 months ago, if this were to happen, none of us would be here this evening, would we? It was all caused because of some overzealous police officers, and I just want to commend you guys for a good job and keep up the good work. And I want to thank also Mayor Fung for renegotiating the contract also. But we're here tonight because of the police report. And ladies and gentlemen, this police report cost the taxpayers of the city over half a million dollars, and not the city, but the entire state of Rhode Island. And I believe that we have a right to know everything that's in that police report. Mayor Fung just stated that there's some sensitive information. Most of the information has all been broadcast either on radio, TV, public radio, or even the newspapers. They've covered it all. We know that there was a captain put on leave for two years for $200,000 that we paid him. As soon as Colonel Winchesters became Colonel, he was reinstated. Actually, today, he's a major. We never did find out why he was put on administrative leave. Now, we're going to give the police officer who really caused a lot of this mess, we're going to give himself the $3 million over his lifetime. Ladies and gentlemen, don't be fooled, don't let people circle the wagons. We know what's going on, we knew what was going on, it's been broadcast, it's been over and over again for the past 21 months. Please, urge the mayor to release the entire contract, the entire report. Not only that, this report was given and was gone over by the Attorney General, by the Attorney General Kyl Martin. He didn't find anything to indict anybody or to prosecute anybody. So I think that this whole report should be given to the public.
Good evening. I'll make this quick, couple of tough acts to follow. Robert Santagata, President, IBPO Local 301. I just want to take this time to thank everybody from the Finance Committee that unanimously passed the tentative agreement in Finance a couple of weeks ago. I also want to thank Finance Director Strong, Mr. Coop, the mayor. There's a lot of work, a lot of time went into it. But I'm also hoping with, obviously, with the elephant in the room tonight, that with all the controversy going on about the police department today in the media, that the momentum will continue. I've spoke to many of you, you all know how I feel, I do not want to see my members to be continually abused, or abuse is a strong word, or criticized for the job that they do every day because of the mistakes of the past. We're trying to move forward, that's all we ask, to be treated fairly. I don't want to go too much into a history lesson, but for those of you who don't know, the IBPO was started in 1962 in this city by seven individuals that refused to follow politics and boycotted a promotional test. So it's now a national organization. So it all started here, we're very proud of that, we just want to keep moving forward. I hope the momentum from a couple of weeks ago will continue, and I just ask that you can put aside the controversy when it's time to vote tonight and do the right thing for my members.
Anybody else from the public like to speak on any docketed item?
Richard R. Tom, 400 Farmington Avenue. A little while ago, you were fed some pablam, I'm going to try to give you some hard-boiled eggs. This report's synopsis only, much more to see in the 250 pages, is pretty damn damning. Some of the quotes that the Colonel made in this report is more than damning. At the outset, I should say that we should give a round of applause to now Lieutenant Colonel Barry and his lieutenant, who spent 10 months in that department. And if you read this report, they must have been faced with a very difficult charge to try to go in there, run the department, find out what was going on, interviewing 50 people at the same time trying to write a report. The report uses the $500,000, which I talked about the last time I spoke. We all know that's a climbing number, that's not going to be the end of this. What I'd like to know is, on Antinucchio's case, according to the paper, he's going to stay on the payroll before he retires, I believe it's in the spring, if I'm wrong, you'll correct me. And he's able to collect his salary while sitting at home as our taxpayers pay it, including his Bennys, because he had days that was due to him for vacation and so forth. I'd like our internal auditor to do fiscal responsibility and look at that and see how he could have that much time before they put him on official retirement, which will then continue to pay him, including his health care until he's 65, and keep in mind, he's only in his 40s. That was, I thought, very glaring. But if you listen to what some of the Colonel said, there was a consistent theme that pointed to a lack of leadership and mistrust within the highest levels of the department. Think about that. We all know that police are paramilitary men, and the command structure is more than important than anything else that goes on in this city. And just read that, read that, and make out of it what you should. And it was very critical of the deal they tried to work out for Fung. In fact, he says here, many of the details revealed in the letter, which was sent to Fung on July 22 from Rhode Island State Police Superintendent Colonel Stephen G. O'Donnell, are not new, such as the deal Fung attempted to work out with Antinucchio to let him return to the department with minor sanctions. Just think of that. Barry charged him with seven different defects in what he did while he was a member of that department, seven. And he's walking, walking with taxpayer money. The behavior illustrates one of the core problems which came to light during the assessment, the secretive interference by you and your staff in the operations of the police department, end quote. Think about that. Now, you as a legislative body, I don't know what you could do, but I'll tell you, this raises, as most of these types of synopses do, raises more questions than answers. But there's one big question, what is the other information that you need to do your responsibility as a legislative department? This should not be the end of this. Also, we have Major Todd Padalano, we all know about that one, but Major Robert Ryan's alleged misconduct, end quote, retired Captain Todd's forced medical retirement, Captain Antinucchio's ticketing, Captain Karen gender discrimination allegations, the demotion of Officer Josephson, the hiring of private investigators to conduct surveillance on members, and the alleged problems with the promotional system, allegations of illegal audio recordings, and the overall mistreatment of members of the department. Boy, you've got a long way to go. Let me say one more thing before I end. I know Mayor Fung gets more personal privileges than I do, but I still have a First Amendment, and I'm a citizen of this. I want to just take the opportunity to thank the blue bloods behind me. I can't imagine what it was like going to work day in and day out, and believe me, all you're doing is reading a piece of paper, but just think what really went on there day to day. And yet, these men and women, for the most part, they may have been sick to their stomachs some day, and they may have felt, why am I a police officer? But they carried on and did a hell of a job, and they're to be commended.
Anybody else from the public like to speak on any docketed item?
Colonel Michael Winchesters, Chief of Police. I just want to say that I have begun to review the state police report that was given to me this afternoon, and I can tell you, there's not a single officer in this room that deserves to be criticized or scrutinized on what happened in the Cranston Police Department. Everyone in this room works hard each and every day. This police department is a lot different than it was several months ago, and that's thanks to the hard work of these men and women behind me. I ask today that we leave on a positive note that you consider voting positive for this contract. Like I said before, this is a long way, there's another step in the right direction to keep the morale upward and moving upward in the police department. So I thank you for your time and look forward to your support.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on any docketed item? Public section, the hearing is now closed. A resolution, election to remain under the current 21-year amortization schedule while the city of Cranston, municipal, police, and fire employees in the state mirrors pension system. Sponsored by Councilman Favecchio, Councilman Botts, and Councilman Papalakis, and it's been motion approved by Councilman Farina. Is there a second on that?
Seconded.
There's a second. Well, any discussion? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. The purpose of this resolution, and I don't know whether we need to amend the rules to give it immediate consideration, but this needs to be done before August 1st. Based on the new pension settlement, we were given the option of extending our payback period for these pensions. However, after review, and Mr. Strong, I know, has reviewed it, it would be more costly and add more debt to extend it. And since we're actually ahead of schedule with some of these pension payments, the city should pay it off according to the current 21-year schedule, and that will save us considerable tax dollars rather than extending it. So I would urge everyone to go along with us.
Councilman Osito.
Yes, through the chair, to Councilman Favecchio, I understand that this is just a resolution, but is there a fiscal note or financial information tied to this?
Yes, through the chair, we could ask Mr. Strong to comment on it, I know he has the figures.
And is there any reason why it wasn't attached to the resolution, why we didn't receive it ahead of time?
I think it's part of it.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I think there's information, I keep scrolling down.
Mr. Strong, would you like to comment?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Councilman Osito, attached, it should be attached to the resolution, was a letter...
It's open.
Excuse me? Okay. It was a letter from Executive Director Frank Kopinski from the Employees Retirement System, and adjoining that was a projected employer contribution amounts. And when we reviewed this, based on that schedule, it did not make any sense financially to extend this from a 21-year amortization period to a 25-year. We felt that continuing with the 21-year would make sense. And the reason that we're before you tonight is that in the letter, it requires that the governing body of the council approved this, and it had to be done prior to August 1st. That was the deadline that was given to us. And this letter came out at the end of June, so there wasn't much time to approve this, and it was our belief that it was in the best interest to continue with the 21-year
Councilman Stykos.
Question for Mr. Strong. I have a copy of that letter and the accompanying charts, and the first chart indicates that the 25-year payoff would be, would cost a little less than $2 million more to the city than the 21-year payoff. Now, is that for the, is that chart for the non-police and fire?
No, that particular unit, 3, I believe you're looking at 3007?
Yes.
That unit is the, hold on one second, please.
I talked to Kopinski about this.
That's the municipal. 3007 is municipal, 4104 is police, and 4105 is fire.
Okay, so the 3007 is the non-police and fire?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, when I turn to the next page with the police unit, that indicates that the change to 25 years would cost about $200,000?
Yes, just short of 200.
Over the 25-year period. And then, in the information that I received, I didn't get a full anything on the fire. What is the fire numbers?
I believe, because the fire is over 100% funded at this point, so they didn't attach a schedule.
Council President, if I can address that? Council President? There is a schedule for fire, but if you notice, it's just a percentage. Because it's a percentage of pay, it would increase because fire is actually overfunded in the plan. It deals with amortization schedule, so our contribution would increase to, I think, that's 7.7...
Four percent.
Four percent. But they did not do a schedule because it was an overfunding scenario, and it would just cost more. So they just gave us the percentage.
Mayor Fung, thank you. This is one of the few times you spoke before the city council in my six years as president. Strong, would you like to continue?
So, yeah, so why would the percentage increase over a longer period of time?
Because of the time factor, the extra four years, they would increase that percent.
If I may, Council President?
No, you may not. Any other questions concerning this resolution? Councilman Sanamaria?
Hypothetically, if we pass...
Hypothetically, if we passed this, would this get right to the mayor's desk as soon as possible so we could sign it if we have a deadline of August 1st?
Strom, can you answer that?
Yes.
The city, you well?
Yes.
If it's passed this evening, the signed copy would be with the mayor tomorrow morning.
Councilman Osito.
Director Strom, these assumptions are only correct and good if and only if future councils, besides this current one, continue to fund these at 100%, right? Or is it a mandate that they be funded at 100% or we lose state aid?
It is mandated by the state that we fund at 100%.
So there's nothing for future councils to come in here and say, we're going to fund it at a lesser percent?
No. Not in, not with the state retirement system. You would leave yourself vulnerable to a reduction in state aid.
Thank you.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. This council is always looking for ways to save taxpayers' money. Reamortizing the pension from 21 years to 25 years would actually cost taxpayers, I believe it was said somewhere around the vicinity of $1.2 million over the cost of the time that we essentially refinance. So I will be voting in favor of keeping on the 21-year plan and again, saving the taxpayers just a little over a million dollars. Thank you.
Councilman Stykos.
I also would urge passage of this resolution because it would save money in the long run. I think that people need to realize that in the short run, it's, the 25-year plan is cheaper. The annual payments, I mean, it just makes sense. You're going to have 25 years of payments, so you have to pay less, slightly less each year. But it's not a huge difference. And I think it is, financially, it makes more sense to, to pay the pension off and have money available for other, other things that we need it for.
Councilman Osito, do you have?
I'm all set, thank you.
All set. Any other discussion? Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. I too am urging passage of this. It's kind of like paying a house off quick. The faster we do it, the better off we are. Cleaning up these debts of the past, I mean, these are historical debts that were around for the last 20 years from administrations well before some of us, never mind on the council, some of us even in grade school. I think this goes a long way to continue to try to fix the pension issues. And I think leaving it 21 years saves the taxpayers' money. So I urge us all to pass it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is a resolution calling upon the Rhode Island General Assembly to modify provisions of the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights to provide transparency and reduce costs for cities and towns. Sponsored by Council Minority Leader Favecchio, Councilman Botts, and Councilman Papaloskus. Is there a motion? Motion approved. There a second?
Second, for the discussion.
Under discussion.
Council President, thank you. Part of the reason I put this on, and I know that there's some, some members would like to have some more hearings on it, and I may be amenable to that, I just, one of the reasons was brought out by Mr. Tomlin's where he was talking about the Antonucci case and the amount of money that will cost the city, although I think the numbers are not really that accurate. But one of the reasons is that this Lebois process is so lengthy and time-consuming that it, it straps our hands and it makes it very difficult. We don't have complete control over these situations. The laws are created by the General Assembly and we can't, we can't violate those laws. So the process, to me, is, is not transparent. It's very cumbersome and it's very costly to both the officers and the, and the city, mostly the taxpayers. So, you know, if, if, I don't mind putting it over into, into committee if, if that's the will of the council, but I think the, the issue is timely, certainly timely with whatever, everything else that's going on. And I think we need to at least urge our leaders in the General Assembly to make some changes. I'll yield to Councilman Stykos.
Councilman Stykos.
I agree that the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights needs a major rewrite. I just think, and I think I left your phone message indicating I was going to say this, but I think that we need to be more specific in the resolution about what the, the problems are with it. The, obviously, it's a problem if a officer like Officer Antonucci is accused of misconduct and he can essentially drag the process out and get paid and then drag it out to the extent where he can go out on retirement and have no punishment whatsoever or no assessment of whether he was, he did something wrong, which obviously he did. So what I, I would like to ask is that this be referred to the, the ordinance committee so that we can look at specifics and talk about specifics. I think the ones that I would think of off the top of my head are, we have a, the law provides for a three-part panel. Someone picked by the union, someone picked by management, and a neutral. And that just gums up the process. I think it's pretty assured that the union person is going to vote on the union side, the management person is going to vote on the management side, and the neutral person is going to make the decision. But by having three, you have scheduling conflicts, everybody's schedule's got to get lined up, you've got to pay all three people to be at the hearing. So that, I think, is, is a one major problem, along with the fact that the officer gets full pay while this is, while the proceedings are going on. Would be two that I would note. But I'd, I'd like to have a chance to discuss those and, and others. So at this point, I'd like to, to either ask the sponsor to agree to that, to sending it to ordinance. And I think the other point I wanted to make is that the legislature's not in session, so there's no rush like there was on your first resolution. So either I'd ask you to agree to that or I'll make a motion to send it to ordinance instead. I would like to do it.
Through the chair, we have a motion to approve on the floor. Is that being withdrawn?
I'll withdraw, well, I, was my second, correct?
That's correct.
I'll withdraw my second.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion to approve.
And I'll move to send it to committee.
All right, I'll second that motion to send to committee. Okay, so the resolution's been removed. It's going to go to the ordinance committee?
That's correct, here, Council President.
Do we have to pull it out? Do we have to?
Yes.
Clerk, please take the roll on this.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Safety Services, a license committee, Vice President Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I want to defer to my Vice Chair, Councilman Farina. I wasn't at this meeting. So he, he chaired the meeting, so I'd like to defer to him on the intent of the ordinance.
Thank you, Council Vice President. We met, Safety Services Committee.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Motion made and to approve the ordinance and second, under discussion.
Thank you, but I'll tell you what it is now. So, motion 6-15-02, ordinance and amendment of Title 5.6 of Dakota City Cranston, 2005, entitled Business Licenses and Regulations: Taxi Cabs, Female Passengers. Apparently, there's an archaic piece of legislation in the law books that says women can't ride in the front of taxi cabs. Councilman Stykos found this and felt we should strike it from the code book. We all agreed unanimously, so it is before us now.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance Committee, Majority Leader Akero.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance met and we passed unanimously, ordinance 6-15-01, ordinance and amendment of Title 8.28 of Dakota City Cranston, 2005, entitled Property Maintenance Standards: Stagnant Water Accumulation Prohibited. Sponsored by Freshman Papalopoulos. And we passed with amendment, I believe, entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Akero.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a friendly amendment that the sponsor agreed to. On line 61, you see stagnant water. Presently, there's one inch of depth. I'd like to make an amendment to increase that to four inches.
Second.
All right. Motion made and second on the ordinance. Any discussion? Councilman Farina.
Thank you. To my colleague, Councilman Papalouskus. Thank you for this ordinance. I think it'll go a long way to helping people that have issues in their yards with stagnant water from old pools that haven't been serviced in years. I think this is good legislation for the residents of Cranston and we appreciate the legislation. Thank you.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted the reasoning behind the friendly amendment because, as we all know, an inch of water can really make, spawn, I think this goes to mosquitoes and whatever. And as anyone has had a garbage can lid or whatever, well, now that we have the ones that you can't remove anymore, but in the old days, when the lids are on the ground, they collect rainwater, there'd be less than an inch of water in those lids and you'd still see larvae swimming around in there. So I, I just feel as though maybe we could compromise, maybe be two inches?
I'm going to answer your, your question first, Councilman. My logic is, right now, our inspectors are really stressed visiting homes that are foreclosed in with tall grass and other issues. If we keep an inch of water with 80,000 residents in the city of Cranston, I think I could find an inch of water in every yard. I don't think inspectors have the capacity to inspect every yard. So I'm doing this for the, because of the stress on the city employees. I'm just trying to raise it from one inch to four inch. That, that's my logic.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I will be supporting your friendly amendment. Thank you.
Councilman Papalouskus?
Thank you, Council President. The, the purpose of this ordinance was to go after people that aren't maintaining their pools or spas or hot tubs. So I'm happy with the amendment of four inches. I think if it becomes an issue, we can come back and revisit this later. Thank you.
Any other discussion? First, we go on the friendly amendment. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
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 All right. Councilman Stykos, then Councilman Botts.
Yeah, I, in committee, I offered an amendment and I don't see that in this.
It's, I have it, Councilman. Yeah, it's just a redraft, it's right here. You don't have the original, that's the, you have the original, that's the redraft.
Oh. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. I also want to commend Councilman Papalouskus for his work on this ordinance. I think it's a great ordinance, we all know. During the foreclosure crisis, a lot of houses were left abandoned, pools were not maintained, which was a breeding ground for all sorts of insects and whatnot. So again, a great idea and a great ordinance, so you should be commended. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, now we're going to vote on the amended ordinance. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next is the Finance Committee, Councilman Stykos, Chairman.
Okay, we have a, first item is an ordinance that would establish a bus shelter permit fee. That's sponsored by Vice President Santa Maria.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, under discussion. Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. This was going over in, in committee. This committee, the committee saw fit to raise it from 250 to 500 dollars. Still trying to meet with Ripda and Lamar, but that hasn't happened yet. I feel we waited long enough. I urge my colleagues to support this, this amendment and ordinance. Thank you.
Councilman Farina?
Thank you, Council President. I support this wholeheartedly. Think my colleague is running down the right path. I'd like to be added to the sponsor if you allow, if you'll allow it, and I urge passage from the body.
Any other discussion? Councilman Stykos, then Councilman Botts?
Yeah, I just, Richard, maybe you could explain what this is about. Most people here don't have the faintest idea what we're doing.
Okay, I'll go over bullet points. During this, the winter season, I noticed and a few other people noticed that people were standing in the middle of the street to wait for the bus. We had Ripda and Lamar in here, they're co-owners of the, actually Lamar is the owner, Ripda, it's a Ripda Bus Shelter. Had them in here in, in committee, they said they were not going to clean out the bus shelters. So one of the council people asked if they had permit fees, et cetera, et cetera. When we went back and looked, none of them have permit fees, none of them have signed permits. So we felt going forward that they should pay something. The only thing the city of Cranston owned before this was the liability if someone got hit by a bus. This is not about the money aspect of it, this is more about a safety issue for the citizens of Cranston. I don't think anyone in this audience would want their loved one standing in the middle of the street to wait for a bus. So this is a safety issue to me, not a money issue. But the committee felt that it being a permanent structure and making revenue from the advertising along with electrical hookups, that it was considered a permanent structure, therefore should have a permit fee. So I urge your passage.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. Whether you're a resident or a business in the city, if you decide to build a structure, modify a structure, whatever you want to do to your residence or your place of business, you have to get a building permit. Why Ripda is exempt or has been exempt from this, who knows? And I think this is a great idea. I think they need to have a permit for these structures, one, to make sure that they're safe, especially if electricity is running to them. And then, on second, this, this past winter brought out a lot of bugs in the system, glitches in the matrix, whatever you want to call it. And one of them was the fact that Ripda doesn't take care of these places where people wait for the bus. And it's unconscionable that someone would have to climb over mounds or whatever in a, in a snow-drifted bus shelter to, to wait to catch a bus. So again, separate apart from the permit fees, you know, Ripda should be out there clearing these structures. So I wholeheartedly support your ordinance.
Okay. Any other discussion, council? Majority Leader Akero.
Thank you, President. I just want to thank and commend Vice President Santa Maria for addressing this serious issue. I know it wasn't easy with him. I know Ripda refused to meet with him on several occasions and he was very targeted and obstinate and kept to his ground and he got some legislation passed. Thank you, Council.
Council Minority Leader Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to support this. I know that Councilman Santa Maria's worked hard on this and hopefully, this will coerce the Ripda and Lamar to come forward and meet with him. I suspect this won't be the end of it. I'm sure that we'll get some pushback, but I think this is the only way that we can get some compliance and get some help in this. It's a, a serious health risk for people and I think that I commend Council Vice President Santa Maria and I will support it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
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 and I think that I commend Council Vice President Santa Maria, and I will support it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stykos?
Yes.
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 Okay. The next item approved by the Finance Committee is an ordinance to increase the street opening permit fee from $75 to $125.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stykos.
This item is what the utilities pay for digging a hole in the street, pay to the city. I feel that it's way low, and the budget included a provision to projecting that it would be increased to $150. That was vetoed by the mayor. We did then, the Public Works Director put together an analysis that indicated that the cost of doing these permits and doing the checking was approximately $125. And that's why the, where the $125 figure comes from. So I'd urge passage, a little bit of revenue, and a little bit of money to pay for the streets that are regularly ripped up.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, to the administration. Just want to confirm that $125 was the right number based on the analysis, not 75 and 150, 125.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to address that to the members of the council. Public Works Director Mason did an analysis, and according to his analysis, the cost for the city to review one of these applications and issue the permit is just over, is just over $120. And we believe that 125 is a very fair fee to charge for this permit.
Thank you. Derek Coop.
Council, Council Vice President Santa Maria.
Just real quick, to Evan Kirschenbaum, does this pass as legal? Do you just leave? All right, Pat, does this pass legal ramifications so we don't get into another?
Yes, actually, the solicitor approved that it did. There was a formula. The Public Works Director went back and calculated. And if I just might add, Council President, the legislature did pass a statute, two new public laws that allow, that requires that the state building official set building permit fees going forward. So that, if you remember, we had litigation on that. That's now the state's issue to resolve.
Thank you. Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. I too will support this. As I, you know, I had an objection during the budget process. Because of the litigation and the reasonableness, we had to relate it to the actual cost of this service. So, but I think we've addressed those issues clearly, and as I stated, I would support Councilman Stykos' ordinance on this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay. The next item, actually, the next two items are the police union contract. There are, it's a five-year agreement out of one negotiations, but it has to be two contracts because state law says that you can't have a contract longer than three years. The first.
Excuse me?
Yep.
I have a question for our solicitor. I wasn't under the impression that the mayor of this city could introduce ordinances.
Mr. Quinlan, can you give me an answer on that?
Yes, we have researched this and advised the council of this in the past. The mayor, for the budget ordinances, he can introduce an ordinance. But if, let me just check that for a second, though, Joe.
All right, that's been corrected.
The mayor can introduce resolutions. He can introduce ordinances. So continue.
Okay, so the first of the two items on the agenda to do with the police contract, both were unanimously approved by the Finance Committee, and the committee recommends that they be passed by the full council.
Motion approved.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Aketel.
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct.
You're absolutely correct.
We're voting on the first one, Council.
I withdraw my motion and then resubmit. Motion to approve 6-15-04.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Council Minority Leader Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. I attended the finance hearings on this, and I think it's a good contract. I think that the police union and the administration did a fine job in coming up with a contract that really is fair to the men and women of the police department and also to the taxpayers. And it really solves five years of issues, the both of them together. And that's really good. At least we know where we're going for the next three years. So I'm going to support this wholeheartedly.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I said this at the finance committee meetings. I'm not going to repeat myself because most of you were here. But realistically, I'm a big moving forward kind of guy. I don't believe in driving a car, looking in the rearview mirror. I've never lived my life like that, and I don't plan on being a politician like that. I commend you for all the work that you do. I'd like to remind the citizens of Cranston, this is a fair contract. And through all this turmoil, the only thing I will go back and say is that the entire police department handled themselves with decorum, professionalism, and I am proud to be a Cranston resident and proud to have you as my police force. I believe that your actions during this crisis, during these issues, show what true Cranstonians and true individuals you are, and that you believe in this city like I do. So I thank you for that.
Anybody else with a campaign speech? Okay, Councilman Aketel.
Point of information, the only declared candidate in here is not me, so.
Councilman Aketel.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to say that I think it's a fair contract, fair to the union, fair to the taxpayer. I'd like to thank the administration for negotiating a fair contract. And I'd also like to thank the members of the Cranston Police Department and to thank you for your professionalism and the great job that you do.
Councilman Box.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo what everyone else has just said. And I just want to offer one example of the fine work Cranston Police do. And it was last week or the week before that I was tipped off to a, one of those massage parlors, The Scourge of Rhode Island, operating in Rolf Street. And I asked the city clerk if she had any information on it. And come to find out, they came before Safety Services, and the person didn't show. And then it was forwarded to Cranston Police. Cranston Police already knew about it that day, the day that they advertised on a particular site. And within a day, that place was shut down. And that goes to the dedication and to the Cranston Police that shows towards Cranston. And anytime I call, they're either very responsive or already on the issue that I bring forward. So again, everyone on the Cranston Police should be commended, and I look forward to moving forward and putting all this other nonsense behind us. So great job, guys. Thank you.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. Just in reference to your comment about me making a campaign speech, I don't do this job because I have to.
Point of order. It's just a topic, Council President.
Councilman Farina.
I have, I'm voting point of personal privilege against a comment that the council president made, Councilman.
Council President will make a point of order. I apologize if you took my little dig seriously enough to get this upset. I apologize to you.
May I finish my statement, Council President?
Now you can continue.
Thank you. I don't do this job because I have to. I do it because I want to. I decided to do this to get elected, like most of these council people did, to serve Cranston. So I only know a modicum of what you guys go through to serve Cranston. And that's what I mean when I say you love Cranston like I do. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Santa Maria.
I'll take the edge off a little. I am so proud of you, and I echo Councilman Farina that I'm proud to have you as my police department. I know you love your city as much as I do. So great job and a great contract. And this is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. This will get stability, and you guys can move forward. And as I always say, turn the page. So thank you for your service to this great city.
Anybody else? Councilman Paplouskas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that this is a good contract for the taxpayer, and I want to thank all sides that sat down to work it out. I know you guys work hard. I took, I was fortunate enough to go on a ride along with one of the officers sitting in the back and had a lot of calls. And you didn't have a lot of people responding to the calls, and you guys do yeoman's work, so thank you.
Anybody else? I'll make the last comment, then. I've been on this council for many years. I voted for police contracts. I voted against police contracts. This contract is fair. It's fair for the police department, it's fair to the taxpayers. And I want one more comment. In the last 10 months, I've seen a complete turnover in the Cranston Police Department. I think it goes with the spirit of working together instead of against each other. And I give Colonel Winkus all the accolades I can because he's the one who turned this around. So good luck, you guys. Keep up the good work. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Motion approved 6-15-05.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve 16-05. 6-15-05. Is any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Continue.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the regular monthly real estate tax abatements as recommended by the taxes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. The final item approved by the Finance Committee are the motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the city assessor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Under discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Let's take a five-minute break while the, while the police department.
Paul, I tell, I call like I see it, brother.
Councilman Stykos.
Yes, I'm, did you finish?
Yes, I'm finished. You're all done.
Next is the Claims Committee Chairman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. The Claims Committee met. We had many fewer claims than we did the last few months. We were finally getting rid of the storm issues, the pothole cases. And they were, they were mostly all small cases. Just one auto accident case that was settled for $4,441. But the others were all very minor matters, and those are all done. So hopefully, that's the end of the potholes and the mailbox cases.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Oseado?
Yeah, to the chairman, I know there's another ongoing issue that has to do with flooding. I don't want to get into any detail, but do you know if there's been any progress to that? Through the chair. Chairman, through the chair, to Councilman Vivekio, I know there's a small issue with flooding in the fourth ward during a certain event. I know some things were supposed to happen there. I'm just wondering if you have an update as to have they met with the engineer or anything, or do I need to ask the administration to see if there's an update?
I can speak to that, Chairman.
Mr. Kirschenbaum, you want to address that comment?
Mr. Kirschenbaum. If I could.
Please.
Through the chair. Yes, Councilman Oseado, I have met with our engineer slash expert on Friday. He was involved in a federal case testifying, I believe, in Baltimore. He has given me some tentative dates. This week, I will confirm those dates with the claimants and begin the process that we outlined in claims. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chair? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public hearings. Anybody in the audience like to speak on any item? Docked or undocked?
There is one additional claim.
Okay.
Yes. As the council knows, for some time, I've been working with Veolia to settle various issues that have come up from time to time with the wastewater treatment plant. There was one particular issue involving the sludge incineration that we have come to an agreement on. We have agreed to a percentage that we believe will be beneficial to both parties regarding the sludge revenue. That settlement, which I will forward to the council, was just inked late last week and will result in reconciliation of revenue with Veolia. And it's estimated that that amount will be about $1 million for the sewer fund.
Councilman Oseado?
Yeah, through the chair, to the solicitor, would that be enough money to perhaps reduce the sewer fee? I know supposedly we're on a five-year increase plan here. Is that enough influx of funds so that we don't have to vote for another? I think it's 5% every year for five years. Would that reduce that?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I believe that that would depend on the ultimate construction costs for the upgrade that we're going through right now. So it could. Thank you. But certainly, it's nice to report a claim going towards the city in a claims meeting.
Public hearings. Try again. Anybody from the public elect to speak on any docked or undocked items? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record. No volunteers? Then we'll have to move on. Public hearings now closed. Election of city officials. The Building Appeals Board. The Building Appeals Board. Susan Guglielmo, reappointment as architect engineer, member term ending March 2020.
Point of information?
Yes, Councilman Farina.
It's Stephen Guglielmo.
Oh, sorry. Stephen Guglielmo.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on that individual? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. MacFarina?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. David Claxton, appointment as building contractor, member, term ending July 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. MacFarina?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Vincent D'Orfrio, appointment as a public member.
Motion to approve.
Second.
2018. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. MacFarina?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Seidel?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Yes. Report of city officers, standing monthly report as cited, of cited properties in the city requested by Councilman Bots. Do we have a report on that?
Yes, Council President, the report is a link in the, in the docket, and I'll be able to review it. So again, it's, it's a great tool to be able to see what properties are, are being cited throughout Cranston and in my ward, and I appreciate the effort from building inspections. Thank you.
Uh, Executive Communications. Report on hiring. Point of information.
Yes, Council.
Can I ask a quick question of, of the sponsor? After the Dunkin' Donuts, not Dunkin' Donuts, the Cumberland Farms debate, you had said you were going to have inspections check on the eyesore where the Cumberland Farms was gonna go. That was a point of contention of why we should put it up because the place was an eyesore, and you said you were gonna send inspections over. I don't see it on the list.
I believe it was a property next to the proposed Cumberland Farms property, but come to find out.
So this eyesore, this eyesore has never been inspected since we've had that debate?
Well, I don't know which eyesore you're talking about. Maybe we're talking about multiple eyesores, but the one I was talking about, there's a property abutting, the property that the Cumberland Farms is going in. That's the one I think I spoke of that had multiple mattresses in the yard and a temporary garage and all this other stuff. But I, from what I understand, building inspections went out, and the owner of the property was in the process of clearing out the house. I guess it was a rental property or something. So anyway, as I said, it was a snapshot in time when I drove by, and that's what I saw.
Okay.
And so, yeah, they did do that.
Thank you.
One other quick question.
Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. One other quick question through the chair to the administration. Do we, is it possible to get like a disposition on these? I know it, it tells us what, what was inspected and what, what they found, but it doesn't really tell us that, you know, what's happened subsequently.
I can pass that on to building inspections. The only time he would give that was, is when someone asks for a status at council member communications.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Executive Communications, report on hiring special counsel. Is there any report from the administration?
Mr. President, the regular monthly report on hiring special counsel consultants, et cetera, has been distributed to the members of the council.
All right, there's a request to be continued in service. You want to address that?
Yes, Mr. President. Administration's received a request from.
Mr. Council President, can I ask a question on the consultants before we move ahead, please?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Quinlan. Can you just refresh my memory here on the charter, 15.05? It says, reporting on hiring special consultants, special counsel. Are there certain parameters there, or is that kind of carte blanche for the mayor to hire any consultant he wants, like perhaps a security company or something like that?
Just give me one second, I want to pull a section.
Sure.
The authority to hire consultants appears to be pretty broad in section 1505 of the charter. However, the mayor is required to come before the next council meeting with the terms of such contract.
Okay, so I have a question for the Director of Administration then.
Director Koop?
Mr. President, I'll be happy to answer whatever questions I can.
I, I know we got this letter this afternoon, but I believe it talks about the mayor hiring some sort of security consultant, and I don't recall him coming in front of the council on that. And I also don't recall seeing that expenditure coming across any of these lists. So I don't know the exact date, but perhaps, can you research that and get back to us at the finance meeting to see what the cost was or if it reported? Thank you.
We can answer that. I can answer that. Are you referring to the former FBI official who was looked at to do an assessment of the police department?
No, I, I just don't have it here concisely, but.
Well, that's the only, that's the only one that I can recall. I can tell you this, that that contract never materialized, and there were no expenditures spent.
So there was never a person to hire to follow and tape police officers at work or review tapes of police officers at work?
Your question is, did the mayor do that?
No, 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 I didn't say that. I, I just said, who, who was the consulting company who was hired to do that? And if that's the case, why didn't they come? But I guess you answered it. So you're saying the consultant was never hired then, correct?
Well, I think you're equating two different things. The first, in the, in the, in the assessment letter, I understand that the mayor was going to hire, I believe it was a former FBI official to conduct a review of the internal investigation of the Cranston Police Department with respect to the ticketing incident. Anything else was not done through the mayor's office. Period.
Thank you, Council President. At the last meeting, I had asked, looking at the hourly rates of our legal team, Darrell and Everett never got back to me, they charged $305 an hour. And now we have a new vendor, Donahue, Barrett, and Singal, charging $400 an hour with a bill already now of $118,000. So are we reining in these legal fees or are we punting? I'd like an answer on Donahue, Barrett, and Singal, and I know you're gonna say they're specialists, but ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous.
Councilman, on the first question that you had, that law firm represents the city on two pension suits, one with the state and one on the city pension system for those gentlemen that opted out of the city pension agreement.
That's Darrell and Everett or Donahue, Barrett?
Donahue, Barrett, and whatever.
$400 an hour?
That's a special counsel that's needed for that engagement.
There's no one else that can do it for cheaper?
I can't, you know, I can't say.
I'll leave that out there.
Uh, Councilman Vivekio.
Well, to, to answer.
I am not being objective because you're an attorney, so I, I need you to tell me this, why as a councilman, not as an attorney.
Yeah, no, well, to, to, to address your question, I think part of the reason is the, the state left us in the lurch with regard to these pension lawsuits. You, you forget that our pension, our police and fire were not included in part of that settlement. So we had additional legal fees, and Mr. Kirschbaum can correct me if I'm wrong, but we had, we had a special situation unlike the other cities that were involved in the pension settlement, which occurred after the former treasurer passed the legislation and then ended up in court and then changed the whole deal. So, and we were left with unions that were not accepting that settlement. So we incurred additional legal fees. So I don't, I don't think it's something that we created, and the fact that they're, they are a little pricey, I wish I could charge that amount, but, you know, that's the way it goes. They're specialists in these type of, in this type of litigation.
But don't forget, the taxpayers are paying the bill, not, and you and I are taxpayers.
Tell the governor that.
All right. Well, Mr. Koop, did you want to expound on Lieutenant Dean Brockway?
My pleasure, Mr. President. We've received a request from Cranston Fire Department Lieutenant Dean Brockway in anticipation of reaching his 57th birthday. He requests to be continued in service for one year. We have received documentation indicating his eligibility, and I recommend the council approve this request.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. MacFarina?
Yes.
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 Yes. Council President, Communications. First of all, Mayor Fung spoke earlier about he invited the state police in for investigation. However, my recollection is the city council were gonna make, do a resolution to invite the state police in on that very same day the mayor, before the council meeting, invited the state police in. So he followed our example. The mayor also mentioned that he's taken steps to correct the problems in the police department. However, according to the report, he created most of the problems in the police department. I'm glad to see he changed his ways, now he's looking, looking forward to correcting things. Talked about setting up a police commission. This council has been looking at a police commission for a period of time. I think that's exactly what we need. This eliminates political influence in our police department. Earlier, I expounded on Colonel Winquist and the job he's doing. And the reason why he's so successful is from the outside. He's not one of a clique. And that's what's happened in Cranston for years and years. Cleaks. One clique tries to take control, they use the mayor's office by supporting him, and then they get what they need. Then another clique comes along and wants to take control, and this process goes on and on and on. It's why we need somebody from the outside who's objective and doesn't have allies within the police department, but can run the ship with an outsider's view. Now, concerning this report, it's a sad, sad chapter in the history of this city to receive a communique from the state police, which indicates that there's been massive amounts of interference in the operation of the police department. It'll be even a sadder day if Mayor Fung tries to block the release of the full state police assessment report. If this happens, I want to assure everyone that this council will do everything in its power to make sure that the report is released. This report costs in excess of half a million dollars of taxpayer money, and they have a right to know what's in the report. This report was done by the Rhode Island State Police, and it's an unbiased, objective report on the situation in Cranston concerning the police department. It's unbiased. It's not done by a political organization. It's unbiased. And frankly, if you can't trust the state police of Rhode Island to give you an honest, unbiased report, who in this state could you trust? Mayor Fung, I'm embarrassed for you. Councilmember Communications. Council Vice President, Ajary Diaketo.
Thank you, Council President. We're still on the, the Council President Communications, correct, and the, and the police report, and I have just some general comments to make about it. First, let's set the record straight. Now, I want to elaborate on, on what you said.
Council President.
The, the initial.
That's your, that's your communications, if I'm correct.
All right. Now, this is my communications. I'm done with mine. I'm asking for councilmember communications.
Fine.
All right. Councilman Diaketo.
Well, does that take the police report off the, off the?
No.
No, it's on, it's on the docket.
All right, thank you.
I, that's one of my agenda items, Councilman Diaketo. You can follow me.
I just, I just want to expand on something the Council President said about how the state police entered Cranston. The initial response of the mayor was to let the Cranston Police Department investigate itself. That's what initially occurred. Then his second move was to invite a New Jersey firm here to over-assess the Cranston Police investigation. It wasn't until what Council President said that the council drafted a resolution to invite the state police here, and at the 11th hour, Mayor Fung held a press conference and called the state police to Cranston. I just wanted to set the record straight, Council President. Thank you.
Anyone, Councilman Styches?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the state police report. First of all, I'm, I'm disappointed that the mayor has left. We sat and we listened to what the mayor had to say, but he's not here to listen to what we have to say, and that's fairly common. I think the key line in what he had to say was, "I did not create these problems." Well, he did create the problems, and if there were problems before he was mayor, he made the problems worse. And it's time for him to recognize that he's done that. What his, from the beginning of this scandal on the tickets, it's been all about damage control from the mayor's office. Now, when I first asked for the information on the tickets, I called up and I said, "I'd like to know about, I'd like the records on tickets." And I spoke with Mr. Lopez, the mayor's chief of staff, and he said he would supply it at the next council meeting, and I, after the meeting was over, I asked him for it. We went over into the mayor's office, and he handed me a sheet. And the sheet, excuse me, the sheet was a summary of tickets by month for calendar year 2013 through November 26th, November 16th, 2013. I have the sheet here, I've saved it. And it, it talked about the number of tickets issued in the city for an 11-month period. And then at the bottom, it comes to the conclusion that there were, Edgewood only had 24% of the tickets in that 11-month period, and that the percentage of tickets issued east of Dyer Avenue was 61%. And what this was, was not the issue. The issue was what happened after the Finance Committee voted down the police contract. What happened then, not what happened in January, February, March, April. And so this, this is what Mr. Lopez gave me. And then he said, "You don't want the backup information, do you?" And I said, "Yeah, I want the backup information." And when I got the backup information, I of course saw all the streets in my ward. And then there were a bunch of streets that, quite honestly, most of them I didn't know where they were. And I called up Councilman Diaketo, who also voted against the police contract. And I said, you know, first of all, we discussed that we saw tickets in our wards for the first time probably since Mike Trafficanti was mayor for overnight parking. And then we got together and we went over the list, and lo and behold, 99% of the tickets that weren't in my ward, where I didn't know the streets, they were in Paul's ward. It didn't have anything to do with the percentage of tickets to do in Dyer Avenue. So that was the first effort at damage control. As Councilman Diaketo said, the second effort at damage control was hiring somebody to review the, not to investigate, but to review the investigation of the Cranston Police Department. Then he hired, he brought in the state police after the council was about to recommend that the state police be brought in. state police be brought in. And then tonight, we heard from the mayor that he's all for issuing this report to the public. He's just got to check with the Attorney General. That's the only problem, the only holdup. Well, we've been asking about this report at council meetings for months, and the position, the consistent position of the administration is, they might show it to us in executive session, but they certainly were not going to make it public. Now, it's going to be public. So he wants it to be public. So the question is, where do we go from here? And I think that the mayor has two things that he has to do. Number one, that report has to be public, because none of us on the council, nobody's sitting in this audience, nobody in the public is going to be satisfied that they know what's going on until that police report, state police report, is made public. That's number one. And number two is that the mayor has to come before the council at a public meeting and answer to what is in that report, and answer questions from the council, and answer questions from the public, not give a speech that mentions the bond rating, and you mentioned everything except the opening of Bonefish Grill at Chapel Hill. We need to talk about the police report. We need to be, we need to see it. We need to have a full accounting of it. Thank you.
Counselman Masido.
Yes, Counsel President, through the chair of Director Coop. I guess the name of the company was Net Synergy or Evan. It was Net Synergy, hiring the pride investigators to conduct surveillance on its members. But that's not my question. My question to Director Coop is, when can we expect to see the police report? And you have to explain something to me after I get an answer to that. If in paragraph 10 of this summary letter, it states that everything was already given to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General ruled that there weren't any criminalities in any of the things that happened, I don't understand, if the summary letter says that everything's okay, why are we going to the Attorney General to get permission to release it again? So the first question is, to Director Coop, when can we expect to get that report released?
Would you mind if I...
You're not Director Coop. No, Evan, I want Director Coop to answer it. Question is directed to Director Coop.
Before he answers the question, can I say something?
No.
No?
Well, that's up to the Counsel President. That's up to the Counsel President, Solicitor.
You're asking for legal opinion.
Director Coop, please answer his question, then Solicitor Kirshenbaum, you can follow.
I'll answer to the best of my ability, Mr. President. The question is, when will the report be released?
Yes.
Is that correct?
To the council and the public.
The mayor's called a meeting, a special meeting of the council for Wednesday to address the report. As far as releasing it publicly, the mayor has asked for an opinion from the Attorney General's office specifically on the issue of the public nature of the information. There is confidential information included in that report about individuals, identifiable individuals, including medical information, personnel records, things that are not public. And the mayor has done the responsible thing by asking the Attorney General's office, which has authority to make decisions about the public records law, to give him a ruling on what is public. The public portions will be released.
So what are we getting Wednesday night?
If I could just add to that before...
Director, what are we getting Wednesday night? Are we getting a copy of the report or a sanitized version Wednesday night? Or what are we talking about Wednesday night?
Well, Wednesday night is an executive session. It'd be inappropriate to talk about it now. I would like to talk about some of your other comments, if I could. There are, I received three letters today from four different attorneys that were emailed to this afternoon. One happens to be from Carly Iafredi, who is the union representative, the union attorney. She is requesting that this report, nor the letter, too late for that, nor the letter be disseminated in any way, shape, or form until, among other things, the union council has had an opportunity to read and review both on behalf of the members whose confidential personnel information may be included in the letter and the report. It's her current position that these documents will violate certain members' rights provided by law, including but not limited to the protections within the law enforcement bill of rights and the disclosure not otherwise required under the Access to Public Records Act. That was one letter. That's what the letter says. The second letter was written by Melody Castle and Raymond Angel on behalf of one of the officers who are mentioned in the report. They object to the release of the information. John Tarantino and Joe McGare, representing two officers who are mentioned in the report, cite a process which is already in court on one of the litigated matters, and I believe that they intend to see...
Solicitor, I understand, I received the letters, I read them, I can read, I think...
Well, you have an MBA and an MPA.
I think I can read and understand that. My question specifically, when is that report going to get released?
As I was trying to outline before I was cut off, there are various competing concerns with the release of the letter, and there are different parties who have various objections to the release of the report.
I mean, how can we just keep doing this? I can't, I asked the police chief a question the other night, and you guys jumped up, don't answer that question.
You'd have to ask...
You know, I want to know when the report's going to be released.
You have the letters, you can contact...
I want to know when the report's going to be released.
You can contact Mr. Tar...
Give me a date. Wednesday. We're going to talk about the report Wednesday night.
I understand that part of this is because cameras are here, but if you let me...
No, it's not. And you know what? I said it earlier today. This isn't a political issue. This is a taxpayer issue, and it's not just taxpayers of the city of Cranston. It's state taxpayers now. $500,000 of state money has been used to get to the bottom of this problem. I think, I just want to know, as the taxpayers want to know, when are we going to get the report? That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Counsel President.
Is that a question or is that a statement?
Counselman Sainburin.
Thank you, Counsel President. Looking at the letter, which everybody has, there are some serious allegations here. Extraordinary relationships between the union and the police chief. The mayor refused to turn over a document. The secretive interference by you and your staff, the lack of top-tier management, political interference within the Cranston Police Department. And it mentions the following people in the letter, Major Padalano, Major Ryan, Captain Dodd, Captain Antonucci, Captain Gilbault, Officer Josephson, Net Synergy. These are serious, serious issues, and all the answers we've been getting are no better than a stone wall right now. Look up "stone wall" in the dictionary and tell me if all the things you have said amount to that. They do.
I will, I will, and the answer is no. Because I don't think protecting...
Evan, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an attorney.
Let me say this.
But my grandson could figure out this is a stone wall.
And you know, and you know I respect you, but the point is that there are people's individual rights that can't be trampled on behalf or in lieu of some media event that this council wishes to create.
So you're going to blow up all these allegations? If I were the mayor, I would want to answer these. If these are true, I would want these answered. If they're false, I would want them answered. Wouldn't you?
Absolutely. And the mayor wants to...
Then when's the answer coming?
And the mayor wants to release the report in the light of these particular people.
I don't think he wants to. I'm not getting the impression that he wants to release the report, Counselor.
Oh, he does. He said it tonight, and I believe him.
Okay, so I guess the question is when, like Counsel Masido said.
I think that's the question. I think there's a process, just so you know, just for full information, there's a process already underway in Superior Court with Judge Matos has ruled in response to a subpoena request upon the state police. That process has to go through. These attorneys are citing their own client's individual rights under the report, and the union does not want it released. Nowhere do these letters say they were contacted by the mayor, and the mayor told them to write these letters on his behalf. I can assure you of that.
I want the report too. I'm on record wanting the report, Counsel President.
Counselman Freedom.
Thank you, Counsel President. You know, in my regard, hindsight is always 20/20. It's very easy to look backwards and talk about things that happened in the past. To read a letter from the Colonel of the State Police that talks about allegations but then doesn't give us examples of allegations so we, as a council, can make a decision as to what it all really means, that's why I want the report. I want the report, and I want the report to go public only for the reason that the state police may have a different view of what an allegation of interference is. You know, the mayor happens to be the chief public safety officer. Right or wrong, that's how our charter's written. I think it's wrong. I think we need a public safety commissioner. I think a lot of us council people have talked about that in the past, but that's the way the charter's written. So their idea of interference may be him just attending meetings at the police station. I don't know what their idea of interference is because the letter doesn't say that. It just says he interfered. Their idea of secret meetings could be him trying to solve a personnel issue. I don't know what their idea of secret meetings is. It uses a lot of really negative buzzwords, but doesn't say to us what the hell's going on or what went on in 2013 and 2014. We're very privileged to have a new Colonel, a new command staff, and I'm pretty sure as we read this report, we'll see a lot of these issues are fixed. Do we still need to know how it happened? Yes, we do. But to get all jumpy about a letter that we got without having the full report to analyze, to back up, to look at the facts, to judge for ourselves and to disseminate to the public, you know, I want to get that for me, for my family, for everybody sitting out there and everybody in the city. But I tend to want to protect the officers that are still on the police force, that may be sitting in this chamber right now, whose names may be in that report. I don't think it's fair, if at any point that police report damages them in any way or talks about their personnel history, that should not be public. In no way, shape, or form should personnel information become public. I have a job with a Fortune 15 company, and I wouldn't want my personnel file to be public. Everyone's job, everyone's life, whenever they've worked, they've all done something that they might not be proud of, and I would never want that public. So I'm all for the operational issues, mayor's issues, whatever happened with the administration, but I don't want personnel information to be public. I want to go on the record to say that I don't think personnel information should be
Counselman Diaraketo.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to talk about an aspect of the letter that perplexes me. It talks about the level of cooperation between state police and the city's administrative administration. And the letter alleges that relationship became strained at a point where the mayor refused to turn over a previous assessment to the Rhode Island State Police when requested by the state police. So my question through the chair to Evan Kirshenbaum would be, what reason would the mayor have for not turning over essential documentation to Rhode Island State Police?
Point of information, I'd just like to ask before Mr. Kirshenbaum answers the question whether he is speaking for the administration, because very frequently at council meetings, he says that he is not speaking for the administration. And I just, is he here as the council's attorney is speaking, or is he representing the mayor?
Is that a question? Okay. Pursuant to the charter of the city of Cranston, I represent the city council, the mayor, and the citizens of Cranston. That never changes, no matter who was at the mic. Sometimes you refer to me as part of the administration or the mayor's lawyer, to which I am clearly not. I am the attorney for the city council, for the taxpayers of Cranston, and for the administration. So I hope that clarifies that issue.
Not quite.
Why?
Because Counselman Diaraketo asked you a question, and I, in what rule are you answering the question?
I'm answering the question...
Are you speaking on behalf of the administration?
I'm answering the question right now posed to me by a client, you, to which I have firsthand knowledge based on fact and my own experience, which doesn't change whether I'm representing the administration, the taxpayers of Cranston, or the council, because a fact is a fact, and I'm prepared to disclose that. Can you repeat the question, please?
I made reference to the level of cooperation...
Yes.
...between the administration and the Rhode Island State Police. And in the letter, the word that they used is strained. And at one point, they give the example, "The mayor refused to turn over a previous assessment to Rhode Island State Police when requested by the Rhode Island State Police." Essential information. So I want to know why, what the reason why the mayor did not turn over this assessment to Rhode Island State Police when asked.
Okay. There implicitly in your question is some background information that I can't answer. I never found myself to have a strained relationship with... No, personally. I myself, I found myself cooperating with them. I went before the council. I asked to unseal the minutes of a certain retirement. I collected information regarding for them. I provided them with a CD. They were always very polite and professional with me. I don't consider that I had a strained relationship. The word of a prior assessment, to me, to me is misplaced. It was not a prior assessment. As anyone who is elected to office knows, that when they first become elected, they form what's called a transition team. That transition team included different people to give a summary of each department and where they thought it was at. It's an evaluative tool by a private citizen, a non-elected person, because he has not been sworn in yet as the mayor, and that's all this was. This was a transitional tool given to a private citizen who did not hold elected office at that time. So the mayor chose not to give out the transitional document that was aided after the conclusion of his campaign. It was not an assessment. It was not done by an official management company.
So you're alleging that the letter itself is erroneous in the terminology they use? Is that, that's what you're saying?
I was present when they asked me for this particular document, and I'm responding exactly the same way I responded to them at that time as I am to you now.
Okay. I have another question, Counsel President. The letter also alleges that there were several secret meetings between Mayor Fung and Captain Stephen Antonucci to return to work as captain after Ticket Gate. Are you aware of any of those meetings that were...
I was generally aware of efforts to try to compromise or settle the case. I would not call these meetings secret. I did not attend any of these meetings.
I didn't know about them.
Well, I know about them now. I didn't know about them at the time.
Did you attend any of those meetings?
I attended, I attended one meeting, which is, was on around December 4th, I believe, in which I was present. Our attorney was present, Director of Administration was present, the mayor was present, the lawyer for Stephen Antonucci was president, and shortly after that meeting, I called the council president, and I informed him of the discussions of that meeting. It was on a Thursday night. I thought it was some things were discussed that he should know, and I informed him about our discussions, and I'm not going to get into what I discussed with the council president in public, because I don't think it's appropriate. But we discussed generally the meeting and what the takeoff was about the meeting was. Those are the only meetings, and I didn't consider myself operating in secret with so many people in the room.
Thank you. Were you aware of any meeting between the mayor and Chief Winquist?
No.
Where the mayor requested, I guess ordered, the chief to reinstate Captain Antonucci? That's yes or no?
No.
All right, thank you. Just to sum it up, the report talks about a lack of top-tier management or fail, failure in management at the highest levels in the Cranston Police Department. And any officer who tries to intimidate members of the city council and grossly abuses his power, I think must be addressed by the mayor, and it would never was. To this day, we don't, we don't know what happened that night during Ticket Gate. Also, the letter talks about political interference within the Cranston Police Department at the highest levels, and those are dangerous allegations, and we must see the complete report in order to answer all these questions. Thank you.
Counselman Botts.
Thank you, Counsel President. I think, I waited to make the point of information, but I know everyone... I think, I waited to make the point of information, but I know everyone speaking refers to the report. Well, we don't have the report yet. I mean, we do have a four-page letter that we received today, or I received today, anyway. I don't know when everyone else received it, but, um, but I just wanted to make that clear, that we don't have the report yet. We have a four-page summary of a report to come. But I do want to make the point that it is tantamount that government be transparent to its constituents. And I realize, after reading the letter that Colonel Donald sent, how much taxpayer money went into compiling this report, which better be damn good for $500,000. I mean, when we received this report in executive session on Wednesday, I expect something akin to what we receive when we do the budget. This better be filled with a lot of information that points out what occurred, because that's a lot of money for a lot of paper. And so I want to see, hopefully, they interviewed 50 people, and I would like to see those interviews, and I hope they're included in that binder or whatever we receive. But I'd also like to point out that this council got itself in the hot water not too long ago regarding Captain Dodd, and something that was said about what occurred with his retirement, and I believe it was some sort of HIPAA issue or whatever. And that concerns me as well. And I think this report should be released to the public, but I think it also needs to be reviewed for any personnel or privacy issues as far as HIPAA is concerned. And once that's occurred, and once this council reviews it, and once it's redacted properly for those specific issues, the public should see it. And once it's done and released, it's my hope that this chapter on this history of Cranston is closed and we can move forward. Because, you know, good things are happening out of the Cranston Police Department, and I want to see that to continue. Counsel President, I also have some mundane issues with my ward. Should I wait, or should I?
I'll go, continue.
All right, through the chair to Mr. Barone. I just wanted to confirm that you received my email today regarding potholes on various streets throughout my ward. I told you it was mundane.
I did.
Okay. Also, driving into City Hall tonight, it's not my ward, but it's Brookside Drive, I noticed they have a makeshift street sign on there, and I was wondering if maybe we could have Highway create an actual street sign for them, and it's at the corner of Pontiac and Brookside Drive.
Can you email me that?
Certainly. I mean, whoever created it has very nice penmanship, but I think we should probably get a real street sign on there. Also, I just want to make the administration aware, it seems to be a lot more loitering and panhandling going on, especially at the exits. I know Route 37 and Pontiac used to be a big one, but now it seems like it's Reservoir at the Route 10 exit. It seems like there's more people there, and I don't know, I looked through the ordinances, and I didn't really see anything for panhandling, but I know there's a loitering ordinance on the books, and I'm wondering if maybe Cranston Police can be made aware of that. I think it really goes to aesthetics of the city, and I think we really need to handle that.
I will address that.
All right, thank you.
I have a follow-up to panhandling, if I can-
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President. Through the chair, Counselor Botts, do you know something we don't know? We're getting a report next Wednesday, this Wednesday night? Is that what you just said?
I was assuming that we're going to an executive session regarding the report. That's what the special call is.
You said we're getting a report, so I just-
Well, I'm making an assumption.
Okay.
I don't have any special knowledge.
And the other thing you said about the mistake we made with Officer Dodd, as anybody who goes on a disability pension, or a regular pension for that matter, our information is only as good as what, if you recall, the administration supplies us. They go there, they say if they meet the requirements for retirement, you know, recommend approval, we approve it. If they recommend that they stay on for a year like we did this evening, the administration comes to us and they approve it. As I recall, with the particular officer you were talking about, that question was asked at least two or three times, that we follow proper protocol to put that officer on disability. And the information that was given to us, best of our knowledge, was that he was, and I think that's why this council voted the way it did.
Right, and I'm not disputing the vote. What I'm disputing is I think that information was given to us in executive session, and I think some of that came out public. I do recall an apology being issued to Counsel, I mean, Captain Dodd's attorney, and I think there was some sort of issue with that. So that was my main concern, and I think-
That's fine, I agree.
I think prudence is, you know, there shouldn't be a, you know, obviously, we've been waiting this for a long time. And I think, once we receive the report and it's properly reviewed, I am wholeheartedly in favor of releasing it to the public. But I think we do need to do some due diligence for us.
Yeah, and Mr. Counsel President, last, last point, if I could address this to Solicitor Kirschenbaum. I know these letters came, they kind of came, I don't know what time they came in, but how did their attorneys know that they're mentioned in the report if they're so upset? I don't think I got a copy of the report. Their names weren't mentioned in the summary. I got the report this afternoon after an email at 1:00. So all of a sudden, these letters come in, Evan. So can you, can you answer that?
There were reports in the media on Thursday that this report was going to be released, and upon those reports, they immediately contacted me surrounding their own particular clients.
But so they know for a fact that their clients are in the report?
This was discussed in court earlier that particular week on a civil case, that one of the claimants was issuing a subpoena to the state police, and there was a certain order issued by a judge regarding the report. So the question was, was that procedure, as agreed to in court, going to be followed, or is this just going to be a general release? So that's why the letters were, were sent out.
Counselor Fran.
Thank you. Mine has nothing to do with the report, so you can leave the cameras wherever you like. I'm going to do some council business to follow up on what Counselor Botts was speaking over panhandling. I've received several phone calls, I know Counselor Poplouskas has two, about panhandling in the Walmart Plaza. It seems like there's a team of people panhandling and rotating as they panhandle. When the police come and send one away, someone else turns up with the same sign. I've gotten four or five phone calls from the people who live in that area, and I know Chris was, Counselor Poplouskas was working on this, potentially to do some, some work to quell this issue. Would you like an email, Director Barone?
No, I didn't hear a question yet.
Can I make a point of information, by the way?
So, like, what are we doing, what can we do to stop panhandling in these areas? Especially on private property, Walmart Plaza, ends of Othrway, State Roads?
Members, members of the police department have reached out to the management of the Walmart Plaza. I believe they have to hire their own security to do that. And, what's that? I don't know what the status of that is, I could follow up on that for you.
Could you follow, let me know?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Counselor Steikos, you have a speech.
Yes, question from Mr. Kirschenbaum. You talked about this court case earlier this week. Could you be more specific? I know that this stuff is, is public record at the courthouse, who's suing who, and could you use some names, please, so we could know what's going on?
I don't have the docket number or the full caption of the case.
Well, you can-
I know, I don't-
Give us a gen, what you can remember.
There was a Judge Maddows issued a ruling earlier in the week regarding a subpoena that was, a continuing subpoena. Our attorney in that case is Joe Kavanaugh.
A subpoena for what?
It was a subpoena issued to the Rhode Island State Police to produce the report.
And what case is this?
I believe, I don't, I don't know 100%. I, I don't want to, I don't want to say, because I'm not sure, I'm 99% sure, but I really don't want to-
Were you there?
No.
Oh, Mr. Kavanaugh was there.
Yeah, yeah.
I see. All right.
If you give me a minute to look at my email, maybe I could-
That would be good.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Coop in the meantime.
Okay.
My question is, did, did anyone, did the mayor, or anyone from the administration, or the city solicitor's office contact the attorneys, or someone connected to the attorneys who wrote these letters concerning the police report? And that's the letter from Castle and Angel, it's the letter from Carly Iafredi, and it's the letter from Tarantino and McGare. Did anyone contact, from the administration, contact them prior to the letter?
I can read the email first, on your prior question, if that's okay?
Okay.
The ruling was last week by Judge Maddows. The plaintiff had agreed to extend indefinitely the return on the subpoena-
Who's the plaintiff?
I don't have that in this email. I can keep looking.
Good. Mr. Coop can answer my question in the meantime.
Okay. I know this, that Carly Iafredi emailed me last night, I was having dinner with my family, probably was on 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock.
Okay, that's not my question, though.
What was your question?
Did anyone from the administration-
Oh.
-contact these, or the solicitor's office, contact these people before they wrote these letters?
Regarding the subject of these letters?
Yes.
If there's ongoing litigation, obviously, our council has been in contact with them. But I can tell you, if anyone tipped them off, I believe is probably what you're getting at, if anyone tipped that off, it was done without my knowledge, and as far as I know, it was done without the mayor's knowledge. No, to the best of my knowledge, no one tipped anyone off, if that's what you're getting at, Counsel.
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
The answer is no.
Thank you.
I'll make a comment on that. There was only three copies of that letter. State Police had one copy, the mayor had one copy, and I had one copy. My copy was never released until I sent our copies to the city council at approximately 1:00 yesterday. The attorneys called in between 1:00 and 5:00, all objecting to the letter. So somebody tipped them off, and I don't know who it was. The administration claims they didn't. I'm sure the state police didn't call these attorneys. And I certainly didn't call these attorneys, and I don't even know their names. So it's a guessing game. Nobody knows anything. It's kind of like the story of this whole investigation. Nobody knows anything.
Counselor Vecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Well, to answer Counselor Masiro, your questions about trying to get this report released, that's great. If you, if you want to indemnify the taxpayers, I'm sure the mayor would release the report in its present form. The problem is-
I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what that means.
Well, that means that we could get sued if we release confidential information. That's the reason, that's the problem. If you wanted, you know, if you want to indemnify the city, then that's fine, then we can release it tomorrow.
Well, get me insurance quote, and we'll think about it.
Yeah, I'm sure it'd be quite extensive. I guess you're a pretty wealthy guy, but, you know, these letters were issued, it looks, one of, two of the attorneys issued a letter today. Whether, and it really doesn't matter, because those rights that these people have are there, whether you like it or not, they have rights to privacy, and they could sue the city, and we could spend a lot more money. And in fact, I'd like to ask through the administration, through the chair of the administration, we didn't get a bill for that $500,000, did we? Or we don't expect one as well, right?
No, we did not. We never received the bill, and if it was, if it was me, in my, if I was in that position, I want to see an accountability of where they're coming up with $500,000, because we certainly didn't get it.
Yeah, I think we've, you know, we've waited a long time, now we know why. It's 200, 200, 300 pages, whatever, it's a, it's a novel. So it took them quite a while to write it, and, you know, I think we ought to take a look at it, we'll discuss it at the appropriate time. And then unfortunately, some things cannot be released. I know it's hard for you people to understand, being a lawyer, it's a little easier to understand the rules of confidentiality, but, and the only reason to withhold it is so we don't get sued and spend 10 times that amount of money, so.
Counselor Masiro.
So Director, are you saying the state police overcharged us? Well, they charged somebody. I mean, a taxpayer funds that department, the money had to come from someplace.
Counselor, don't put words in my mouth, I did not say that. I said, they, we should have an opens records request asking where they're coming up with $500,000. Have you seen invoices to substantiate that?
Is that something you want one of our solicitors to do, or?
Well, you can do it, Counselor, you seem to have a lot of energy tonight.
Well, I mean, if we have an attorney here who works for the city, the mayor-
That's beside the point.
-and everything, maybe he can file that for us to get the expenses and the details from the state police.
I'd like to see a detailed amount of where they came up with $500,000. And we haven't paid a nickel, and I don't intend to pay anything.
Counselor Fran.
Thank you, Council President. Unfortunately, the executive session was put on the docket well before I booked travel plans for the week for my family. If the report is disseminated at the executive session, will arrangements be made for those council people who cannot attend the executive session on Wednesday? I know we're not talking like we're going to get it Wednesday, but if it does happen, hopefully, we can make arrangements for the other councilmen to, to get a copy. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Majori Lita, Marquinhos.
Thank you, Council President. This saga has gone on for 18 months, and initially, the administration hid behind the police officers' bill of rights, and it was shrouded in secrecy, and the council got no straight answers for months and months and months. Now there's this spin, I'm hearing information cannot be released to the general public because of personnel issues or other issues. In my opinion, there's a higher calling, there's a higher standard, there's a standard to the taxpayer, the city of Cranston is the standard to the taxpayer of the state of Rhode Island, to know what happened during Ticket Gate, to know the truth, and let's get some straight answers, and let's this administration be transparent for once. Thank you.
Counsel, anybody else? Counselor Poplouskas.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just want to go on the record and say that I think we need to be 100% transparent with the report. I am concerned about HIPAA laws and personnel issues, but I think we need to be 100% transparent and release it. I think transparency, transparency will bring trust, so I think we need to do that. And then on a lighter note, I just want to thank Director Barone and everybody in the administration that work hard and to help make St. Mary's Feasts this year go off smoothly and was a success. Thank you.
Anybody else on the city council have any comments? Okay, moving on. Old business. Is there any old business this evening?
I have none.
Introduction of new business.
We have the following three ordinances to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on August 13. 7-15-01, an amendment of Title 10 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled "Mode Vehicles and Traffic, Miscellaneous Traffic Regulations, Woodbury and Parkway Boat Trailers Prohibited." The next ordinance is also enacting Title 10, Chapter 52.
Can I move to suspend the reading of these and just have them sent to the appropriate committees? All right. Motion made in second to suspend the reading of introduction of new business and have it sent, emailed to council members. Motion made in second on that. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Motion adjourned.
Motion made to adjourn, is there a second? Does that get favor?
Aye.
No adjourn.
Yes, I am, I can-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn, is there a second? Does that get favor?
Aye.
I know adjourn.
Yes, I, I can...